Hi, Julie. This is why I come to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, acknowledgement. The Sika School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral lands of the Klinkit people who have lived in Sipka since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Klinkit, for their enduring care and protection of Klinkit. Amen. Dawn. Todd Givler?
Here.
Mitch Mark?
Here.
Tristan Gavon?
Here.
Blossom Teal Olson?
Present.
Melanie Ward?
Here.
All present. The meeting is current. Moving on to item number five, may I please get a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented?
I move to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
May I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the proposed agenda has been approved. Moving on to item six, new business. Six eight, the most exciting part, swearing new school board members.
Let's go in. You guys want to come up?
Yeah.
For us?
So we do it yet?
Yeah, uh, yes, because you're new now.
Your term expires on election day.
Where are you on us?
Picture this.
How about right? Yeah, and now I can get a picture too.
Okay, so we will say your own name. I guess we could start it.
Here we get the right ones.
Okay, where's your hand? I, sign your name.
I, Tristan Gavon.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska?
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Charter and Ordances?
And the Charter and Ordances.
Of the city and borough of Sipka?
And the city and borough of Sipka.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
As a member of the Sipka School Board?
As a member of the Sipka School Board.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Woo! Congrats, guys.
Can we just go through the code of ethics as a group and some changes so we're all kind of, you know? We can do it right now, right after this and just kind of all of us read through the pieces of the due.
So as suggested by Superintendent Houser, we will move on to review three, nine, two, seven, one, Code of Ethics, six, two. And I'll hand it over to you.
Oh, okay. You know what? So just as we go through, one of the things we're thinking is, oh, you're in Sunday.
You can.
Yeah, we can. So we just thought as, I'm sorry?
As part of the oath of office.
Yeah, as part of the oath of office, going back and reviewing the Code of Ethics for being a board member, and we just thought we'd take an opportunity to go through and, you know, really kind of reiterate why we're here. And so I will go ahead and go through and start reading through and then, you know, maybe I'll pause at the bold points and if somebody else wants to pick up and go through and read it together and then we'll kind of, you know, bring it all together. So this Code of Ethics expresses the personal ideals which a school board believes should guide each school board member's activities in all actions. As a school board member, the member's first commitment is to the well-being of our youth. His or her primary responsibility is to every student in the district. Our members also have other major commitments too.
The community. Each board member is responsible to all residents of the district and not solely to those who elected him, her, them, nor solely to any organization to which he, she, they may belong to or which may have supported his, her, or their election.
Individuals. Each board member has a direct concern for every individual in the community. As an integral part of his or her duties, he or she represents the authority and responsibility of government. This authority must be exercised with as much care and concern for the least influential as for the most influential members of the community.
Melanie? Or Todd? Either way.
Employees. Board members' actions may affect the capability of jurisdiction employees to practice their trade or profession and should encourage their increasing competence and professional growth.
Laws, policies. Not a complete sentence, but okay. Each board member must be aware of and comply with the constitutions of state and nation, the last education statutes, other laws pertaining to public education, and established policies of the district.
Decision-making. Each board member is obliged by law to participate in decisions pertaining to education in the district. As an elected representative of the people, the board member can neither relinquish nor delegate this responsibility to any other individual or group.
Individual feelings and philosophy. Every individual board member has something to contribute to society.
Understanding and acting upon the foregone premises each board member show.
Consider his or her position on the board as a public trust and not use it for private advantage or personal gain.
Be consistently aware that he, she has no legal authority except when acting as a member of the board. Board members shall present their concerns and concepts through the process of board debate. If in the minority of decision, they shall abide by and support the major decision. When in the majority, they shall respect divergent opinions.
Encourage ideas and opinions from the residents of the district and endeavor to incorporate community views into the deliberations and decisions of the board.
Devote sufficient time, thought, and study to propose actions so as to be able to base decisions upon all available facts and vote in accordance with honest convictions, unswayed by partisan bias of any kind.
Remember that the basic function of the board are to establish the policies by which district schools are administered and to select the superintendent and staff who will implement those policies.
Promote and participate actively in a concerted program of timely exchange of information with all district residents, parents, employees, and students.
Recognize that deliberations of the board in executive session may be released or discussed in public only with board approval.
I'll do the last.
Make use of the opportunities to enlarge his, her potential as a board member through participation in educational conferences, workshops, and training sessions made available by local, state, and national agencies.
This is adopted, October tenth, nineteen ninety-five. If you agree with these, please sign a date. How many did you want to send? I'll put them all. All right, I'll be around with those in a second. Moving on to six B, reorganization of the board. May I please get a motion to reorganize the Sika School Board effective October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
A second now.
Oh, I need a motion first.
All right. I move to reorganize the school board effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
May I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Who was the second?
I was, sorry.
Tristan. I will now hand it over to Tristan.
And I'll be, I don't think I'm going to be able to take up, but I will take it for symbolic purposes. So to go through the process, just want to outline the process. For each office, starting with the president of the board, each member will, by secret ballot, nominate one person. The ballots will be passed to Dawn, who will count the ballots and announce one of the following. That one person has received three or more votes, or that no one has received three votes and will announce the top two nominees. If the first situation occurs, a board member will officially move to elect that person as board president. If the second occurs, there will be a second ballot with only two named people as potential candidates, and the same steps follow. The gavel will then be passed to the newly elected president, who will conduct the election of the two remaining seats, vice president and secretary and treasurer. At this point, you all have ballots in front of you. Go ahead and nominate for the president.
Did you understand that, Mom? So we don't know who wants to be in any of these positions, but if we nominate someone who doesn't want to be in that position?
Fair point.
Awesome. I often thought that.
Yeah. Too bad, no. So that could be something when the discussion comes up, the individual can say that they would, or can refuse themselves from that and would thank you for the offer, for the opportunity, but.
That's a good question.
That's a great question.
It is a really good question. So at this point, are there any other questions? All right. Go ahead and catch nominations.
For the new members, Frank, I might just say that this is the only vote that you can ever take in secret. It's for reorganization. The majority of the votes were cast for Blossom.
Do I hear a motion to elect Blossom as the board president?
I will move to appoint Blossom as the school board president.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second? A second now. Any opposed? All right. There are none opposed. Blossom, congratulations. I am going to pass the gavel back to you.
First of all, I don't know if you guys respect me or hate me, but thank you very much for your confidence. I do not take this lightly, so again, I appreciate the confidence. Moving on to the vice president. Do you want me to? The script is right here. Okay. Board vice president, is there any? Let me see. May I please get a motion to elect the new vice president?
Just through the secret ballot, for the nomination.
Secret ballot, okay. This is funny. It would be great if it came out early. I'm going to hold this to my children. All right. For vice president, is there any discussion? Is anyone opposed to the motion?
We need to collect the ballots and then we'll find out who gets the nominations.
Let's collect. All right, let's vote for vice president. Any majority of votes were cast for Todd Givler.
I move to elect Todd Givler as board vice president.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to Todd Givler as vice president. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Let's cast our vote pretty quick. You think I did scripts better? I was a theater kid. Any majority of votes were cast for Tristan, for clerk. May I please get a motion to elect Tristan Gavon as clerk?
I move to elect Tristan Gavon as board clerk.
May I get a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Congratulations.
Thank you. Sarah Peterson's going to be proud of me.
All right, so we don't have a script for the treasurer, but do.
Those we.
All right, there we go. I may now bow out of this and move back and pick an agenda. Moving on to item six C, selection of school liaison. So we self-select a school liaison assignment. It is suggested that yearly we change schools. So I'm going to open up the floor for any, if you have a preference for schools that you may want to represent this year. For the record, I have been the liaison for Sika High School the last year. Todd, you were.
Fair enough.
Fair enough?
I'll try to keep.
So it is suggested that we do change yearly. So with a clean slate, Melanie, do you have a preference for schools?
Seven five.
Todd?
I know it's recommended we change, but I do like keep.
Is there any objection for Mr. Givler keeping his? So you will be, keep?
I don't really have a preference. I'm unhappy with any, uh, if you have a preference. Blossom, I will do rest.
So that is?
Sika High and Fair enough.
Sika High and Fair enough.
Ever you would like to do. I'm happy to do Fair Enough because I love early education. I'm also happy to do Sika because I like secondary education.
And I think we both have the same type of personality.
Do you want to switch or?
You know, it is recommended that we switch, but I believe that the pandemic really threw off the partnership that in growth. And so I, as Todd requests, I keep Sika High's always for that.
Cool. Fine. The school seemed to formally be known as Fair Enough Elementary School.
There you go.
Awesome.
All right, so with that discussion, is there any more discussion to do on the board? I will not close the discussion with the decisions. Melanie, you're representing Sipka High School. Thank you. Todd, keep pushing keep. Congratulations.
Second. I hope you have a good year.
Tristan, Fair Enough. Four, we know, hopefully soon.
Soon.
Mitch, Blackstreet Middle School. Congratulations. And Sika High School, I'm very honored. Moving on to item sixty, selections of the committee assignments. So on the agenda, when you look at the board committees as we have them now, you can see how the committees were formed before the new members were elected. With that being said, they are highlighted, the big changes being the budget committee and, you know, we are pausing the strategic plan committee and the educator evaluation committee for one year. We also need to discuss the tribal council liaison. So with that in mind, does, as it is right now, the board committee, that policy is Tristan and myself. Is everyone okay with that being the same, or is there any discussion or suggestions as to changing that?
All right, I'd like to be on there, but if there's only two, then that's okay.
We can also move as a nominee elect to be an alternate or?
We can only have two people on that committee though, because if we have three, it's a majority, it's formed. Yeah, so we can only have two, most unwisely.
All right. So you're, you're. I will note that you would like to be on the policy as it is. I think we'll keep it as is for right now. If there's any issues or questions in the future, we could discuss it at that time. Moving on to board committee activities, as right now we have Mitch and Todd. So the discussion is with, like, this.
That's good.
Is there any opposing or any other thoughts on that committee? Hearing them. Moving on to the one where we have to, really reorganize because Amy and Paul are both. So that is the budget committee.
May I? So the budget, I would like to just address the budget committee really fast. Last year during the reorganization, there was a recommendation to potentially form a budget committee to talk about the budget. That committee never really met and because we have discussions about the budget, it is something that we want to make sure is transparent through the whole process. And so the committee never met and so part of the, you know, thought for, to put this for discussion is, is this really a sitting committee that we want to have or do we want to, like we originally do through the, you know, through the budgeting process, make sure that we have, you know, you know, we usually have work sessions where we bring in schools in the community at which all board members are present during those conversations around budget. And so it was a request that came up by the board last year and so it's not, and has not been before last year, to my knowledge, a standing committee that the board has had. But I just wanted to put that out there. Is it something that we want to continue to have or do we want to potentially, you know, dissolve what was a committee created last year and just say, just the normal budgeting process and the work sessions and the hearings that we usually have through that budgeting process, that is when and how we will discuss the budget.
With that, thank you, Frank, for that information. As memory serves, somewhere in my notes, the discussion of creating this committee was solely, and the majority was based on the fact of the incoming CARES Act funding and how the pandemic was affecting both of our, you know, the enrollment and the fluctuations of, you know, how budgeting was going on at the time. With that being said, I think we're going back to how things were pre-pandemic and I'm fully for having all budgets discussions presented to the entire board and go through the community process because it is our, it is our school district. And I think we all need to be sitting at the table to hear that. Does it, is that?
I'm not agreeing with that.
Any other discussions or comments on?
So are we suggesting to bring the board, to bring this?
To dissolve the at this.
Would that inhibit the ability to have a board member part of negotiation if that was something you would like to do?
I think that would be a separate conversation we could have outside of, you know, the budget, what really is the focus of this budget committee. You know, that would be a separate conversation, you know, to the negotiation process.
Is this just a discussion?
This is just a discussion.
It would be a, a moment to give a reorganization. Or would it just?
Do we need to move to appoint people or is it just kind of by consensus?
Usually it's, the hell we've done in the past, it's just been by consensus.
We can just have a motion on resolving that at the end, is what I'm thinking.
That's probably the best I can.
To add also before we move on, that, you know, personally I'm happy to have as many work sessions or extra meetings on the budget as possible to, you know, ensure we have a good plan going in and to ensure there's, you know, plenty of time for community input and engagement.
Fine, any further comments? Actually, Todd. Melanie? All right. So that leads us to the technology committee. Previously, it was Todd and myself. I would like to reorganize this because due to my new obligations as board president, I want to be fair and concise with my time and part of my oath that I took was to give my full attention to my commitments. So Todd has been a great partner in the technology committee. We've had a lot of great movement and growth. Cindy Duncan is amazing and her staff is amazing, but if there's anyone who would like to step up to replace me, I would appreciate that. Mitch? All right. Is anyone, great? Are you still on, Todd?
So I will have to continue now, yes.
I knew you were going to ask, I'm sorry. I long told you. All right, so that, I'm glad that we clarified that. So Todd and Mitch will be on the technology committee. Like I said, they're doing amazing. I love our new website. I love Candace. I do not envy Cindy at all. And I hope she stays out forever. All right, moving on to the strategic plan.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
The strategic plan committee, is that a large committee, you know? I'm wondering if, we don't have to do it now, but at some point if we discuss kind of how that carries forward and whether, you know, like a, like a strategic plan evaluation committee or some mechanism to kind of track the implementation and progress towards it. And like I said, we don't need to do that now, but something I think could be valuable.
I agree.
Well, may I?
Yes.
So to speak to that, one of the things that we've done, I think. So to speak to that, one of the things that we've done, and I think it's a great idea, at the next board meeting, the November board meeting, one of the focuses that I'm trying to commit to through my reports is to give a report and identify, you know, through each report, the strategic plan, what has been accomplished through the strategic plan, areas of focus, just as we are starting this conversation, have met with principals and assigned principals to one of each of the action groups, the action committees that were formed around the strategic plan and the strategies in that plan. And so they will be having conversations around how we're fulfilling them, bringing groups together on those action plans that were revolved around the strategies identified. And so reporting back on those is definitely something that I would like to do for each of our board meetings. And so what we can do is put on the agenda for the next board meeting, or at least we'll discuss it with the president, you know, putting on the next board meeting a discussion around strategic plan and how we want and how the board would like me to report back on that.
And just one other comment, I think one of the values of having some kind of reimagined committee that's focused on the strategic plan is that it would allow us, like the other committees, to have a lot of stakeholder input, teachers, paraprofessionals, you know, students, family members, parents. I think especially around those kind of key stakeholders is hearing, you know, a mechanism to hear how it's going.
I think as well, the plan to have your dedication to having an ongoing update as to how the schools are meeting the mission that we set forth in the current strategic plan will definitely strengthen the structure when it comes time to restructure and reimagine the strategic plan. It can only enhance and strengthen, you know, what we're doing now. So thank you and for the record, you give amazing input, so I'm looking forward to them. And thank you for your commitment with that.
Come a long way since taking the notes at the strategic plan.
I do remember that.
All right, so now tribal council meeting liaison. Before it was myself and Paul and we alternated. Myself, I, I am open to having alternating representatives or liaisons, but due to the fact of how the school district appreciates and upholds and how we're cultivating and growing our partnership with the Sycamore of Alaska, I would like to have one, at least one sole person and, you know, I would entertain an alternative representative or liaison solely because I know that time constraints sometimes can get in the way of attendance. But with that being said, this liaison is highly important to the board and it is a vital step in meeting our goals and staying true to our strategic plan. So is there any discussion, is there any person that they're willing and able to commit to being the tribal council liaison for this school district?
I feel a little awkward just, I mean, I, as an employee, last year.
Okay, so yes. Let's address that. I know that both of you.
There's two of us.
Yes, there are two of you, which is amazing and this is part of why I'm excited to have both of you on the school board is proof that we are meeting our goals and strengthening our ties with the local tribe. And so with that being said, I, you know, I respect that you both are employed with the tribe and seeing that it may create a conflict of interest or a, any work added stress. Todd, Mitch, I know Mitch, you're doing activities and, what else are you doing?
Technology.
Yes. Well, I'm willing to continue to be the tribal council liaison, but again, I'm I'm also attending the assembly meetings.
People feel comfortable with me doing it and I'd be fine with it. There's no one else. Don't encourage others who don't.
Right, no, that's why.
You don't have the relationship with us, do you? It's a good opportunity.
It is a good opportunity to learn and that's why when I was selected, I think automatically people were like, well, boss, I was like, no, I think it's very important for people to learn about how a tribe's work. And we had Paul and he was amazing. With that being said, if there, if there's any, you know, if there's any conflicts that may arise or your, you know, the tribe sees that, you know, it may, not, we're good, but we're good, we're good with that.
Sounds good. I mean, in my ultimate responsibility is to the school board and the citizens of Sycamore, so that, you know, I know which hat I'm wearing and that's my priority.
You are, you are taking a government class too, so this is a great opportunity for you to...
We'll get a student liaison.
There you go. And that's been part of our goals, so I'm glad to hear that as well. So with that being said, Dawn, do you want me to go through, I have faith you're taking great notes.
Oh, I have, I've got it all down.
There you go. Moving on.
And you will remain the assembly liaison?
Yes. With item sixty, the selection of committee assignments completed, we will move on to item six E, increase staff at Bearinoff Elementary this time.
Did we want to go back and?
Oh, yes.
To dissolve the...
Yes.
Just to make sure that there's a formal acknowledgement from the board that, that that committee will be dissolved and separated.
All right, moving back to item sixty, we've just got a motion to dissolve the the standing board committee budget, the budget committee. The motion to dissolve.
And move to dissolve the budget committee?
It's our second.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. So, ask it is? Discussion? Yes, it's in.
We have public comment, yeah.
Public comment.
I would just, can I just ask with a public comment?
Yes.
It's not, I just want to make sure that in your policy, it doesn't say that you have a budget committee as a standing committee. That's all I'm asking and your nine thousands doesn't, I just want to, that's all I'm asking. Because some boards do have standing committees in policy under committees, it's under your nine thousands under committees. So I just, I just...
I don't, I don't believe it is. I was just looking at that reason.
Okay, I, I, that's good to know, but some, yeah, I just say that because some districts do.
There are no standing committees this week.
Okay, perfect. All right, then you're good.
Okay.
But the board deemed necessary.
Could I get your name?
I'm sorry, to me, tell us with the Association of Alaska School Boards.
All right. Moving, so it's been moved and seconded. Any opposed? Seeing that, the motion passes. Now, moving on to item sixty, increase staff at Bearinoff Elementary. And I will, I'm excited to, Mr. Howard. As you see in the agenda, due to the increasing student support needs, the superintendent is recommending the hiring of two one-year positions at Bearinoff Elementary, one special education teacher and one ELL paraprofessional funded from the CARES Act funds. So with that being said, moving on to six E one, the ELL paraprofessional, is there a motion? Actually, did you want to just?
We can discuss it after the motion's been made and discussion and do believe we have Ms. LaCron here too.
Let's do that.
I moved it through the use of CARES Act funds to hire an ELL paraprofessional for Bearinoff Elementary for one year.
So second. Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the use of CARES Act funds to hire an ELL paraprofessional at Bearinoff Elementary for one year since this decision. And then we'll go for discussion.
Would you like me to come up?
Yes. You are the person.
Well, good afternoon, evening and congratulations to our new members. So Chris Barron, learning support director for the district, I have, I support special education intervention services and essentially just support each building with providing the supports that they need to do, to do what they need to do for their students. So I've been working with Ms. LaCron, the Bearinoff Elementary principal, since the beginning of the year, looking at each year for ELL, for English language learners, students. We have a changing configuration of support over the years. For example, we have, we have a full-time position typically here at Keet Gushahin. Right now, that's been Rebecca Hemshue the last few years. We typically will have, we have a half-time position at the high school and so the last couple of years, the Keet position has covered both Keet and Blatchley. And then we've done some configuration depending on the need of how we're going to support students at K one. And so sometimes there might be a handful or very few students. Last year, one of our kindergarten stu-, one of our kindergarten teachers is a certified ELL teacher and we had an extra re-contract for that person to support those students. And we had, I believe it was six or seven kindergartners that were identified and they were all in kindergarten. That kindergarten callback time, it worked really well to support those students there. So the last couple of years, it's been served in that way at Bearinoff Elementary. This year, the other way that we've supported that is with some supportive AmeriCorps volunteers. We've had a high number of AmeriCorps volunteers the last two, three years, so that with COVID funding. And so we would have our certified teacher train and supervise AmeriCorps volunteers to push in and support our English language learners with addition to the support by that teacher. So this year, we've been, first of all, looking to see if there's AmeriCorps available and there are two AmeriCorps members currently compared to, one at Keet, one at Blatchley, compared to, for example, ten or more in the last few years. So we do not have AmeriCorps members available. We've continued to connect with our coordinator to determine if there's anything on the horizon. So we've been looking to serve the needs of our ELL students at Bearinoff and have not come up with any other option. And wanted to bring this as well as the other needs, the next item, to your attention even before the next board meeting, because it's pressing to get these, these situations handled, so we have the staff and we need to support these students. We have three students this year in kindergarten that are coming from a Spanish-only or Tagalog-only household and so that's a level of need that needs support during the school day. So for example, our current staff member that's certified, the callback option just isn't going to cut it, so we will need in the school day support for some of those students. So it will be, we would propose a combination, again, of the certified teacher having extra re-contract to supervise, support and look at these needs, but also hire a classified position to support the in-school day push-in supports for these needs.
Using the CARES Act funding?
Yeah, that's our recommendation this year for the, for these next two positions.
And how, how are we out with the spending of the CARES Act funding?
We'll actually have a more thorough report for you at the November board meeting on that. We are sitting above around $500,000.
So it's in the... It's in the framework or something?
It is, and another piece I think is important to highlight, we have budgeted approximately $100,000, no, $150,000 for AmeriCorps members out of the CARES Act funding and we have two. And so there is some, you know, money that was not able to be used for the AmeriCorps that happened back, so they won't cover all of it, but those are, that money is going to be, and that's one of the things we're trying to get in place to got it. Everything else, we'll, like you said, have an update on the, you know, kind of what we've spent and what's available at the November board meeting.
Well, I'd like to say...
I was just, just following up on that. So $100,000 is budgeted towards an AmeriCorps volunteer, we have two AmeriCorps volunteers and what is the cost of that?
$15,000, yeah, hippies.
So we're looking at seventy.
It was a hundred fifty thousand dollars because we were planning on fifteen, so, or ten of them.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, a hundred fifty thousand, sorry.
And we have two.
We have two.
And that's factored into the kind of estimate of about $500,000 then? And that's before the...
That is before the position's created. So.
Can you clarify, what's the total for either one of these positions or both?
Great question, I can go ahead and go, and there's a memo in there. What we are, we did look at kind of a medium rate for both positions and I can speak to both positions that way since we're having a medium cost. So we didn't say the beginning salary because per the CESP contract for the ELL paraprofessional, we have to advertise that internal first. So if there is a paraprofessional that would be interested in that position and maybe they're at a step ten, twelve, we wanted to make sure we kind of found a middle-of-the-road costing for that as well as, we did prorate it because we are a few months into the school year now and so we did adjust that. So right now, we're estimating that cost not to exceed $55,000 for the one year. For the next agenda item, you know, since the question came, you know, for the, for the special education case manager, we are estimating up to $90,000. Usually it's about $100,000 for the staff member, this is an additional position we're estimating because we are, you know, about a month and a half into the school year, about $90,000 for the cost of that, for a total of both positions at 144, or 145,000.
Yes, Tristan?
One question I have, just on my motion, whether I should amend that motion to specify approving that in an amount up to $55,000? Anything like for, just realized for a budget appropriation, if that makes sense to have a number attached?
Yeah.
If that works for you all. So is that automatic? I don't know if I have to make that.
So let's finish up the discussion then, then if there's any more questions for Mr. Barron, we'll go from there. But I would like to add that, you know, as we are coming out of the pandemic and knowing how much the teachers at Bearinoff and Districtwide has put the hours and effort and going above and beyond, and I know how, how tired they are and how amazing they are that they continue to do their work and they're committed to bringing the best education to the students that go to our schools. Being an indigenous person that has, you know, the history that we have of losing our language, there is a bittersweetness that we need people to assist students on a happy note. I'm happy they come from Tagalog-speaking families and Spanish-speaking families and I hope that we have a happy ending where they are both celebrated and they continue that ties with their language and their family and their culture. So with that being said, thank you for what you do. I fully support having this position. I agree that this needs to be amended, so can I get a motion to amend the, the, can I get a motion to amend the approval of the CARES Act funds to... the approval of the CARES Act funds to hire an ELL paraprofessional for Bearinoff Elementary for one year?
I'll move to amend the motion to state, I moved, I moved to approve the use of CARES Act funds to hire an ELL paraprofessional for Bearinoff Elementary School for one year in an amount up to $55,000.
Second. Second. The move seconded to appropriate funds up to $55,000 of CARES Act funding to hire an ELL for Bearinoff Elementary for one year. Since this is, you know, has money involved with that, we do need a roll call vote.
Let's make one.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the comment I want to make, just thinking about what we're learning coming out of the pandemic and looking at the students who have been most impacted, you know, we've seen equity gaps based on a number of different factors. You know, but one of those is students who, you know, English language learners and the isolation of the pandemic, the lack of social contact with their peers and just those opportunities to learn and speak the language, hear the language. You know, I think, I'm glad that we're targeting some of our CARES Act money for those students who have been most impacted by the pandemic and ensuring that those gaps don't continue to increase. Appreciate that.
And it's at Bearinoff at an earlier level. And so with over the years, I, I hope their growth will get stronger. So with that being said.
Do we need to do public comment? I'm sorry.
Yes.
We haven't done public comment, plus it's also an amendment, so after amendment and back to the motion and then, so we have to do a public comment too on that question for the amendment.
Public comment to the amendment?
Public comment.
I'll listen, I'm the next one.
Huh?
I'm the next one.
Okay. Having that public comment, let's do, it's been, the motion of the amendment has been moved and seconded.
Should we open that?
And with this having money involved, I will hand it out to Don for the roll call vote.
Will you save the motion on table, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you for keeping me kosher. Stating for the floor, it, the amendment to the motion is, the roll call vote is for the amendment to state to approve the use of CARES Act funds to hire an ELL paraprofessional for Bearinoff Elementary for one year in the amount of up to $55,000.
Mitch Mark?
Yes.
Tristan Gavon?
Yes.
Blossom Hill Olson?
Yes.
Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Melanie Borg?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Moving on to items.
Tristan, did you want to?
I was just going to say that, because that was a vote on the amendment, right?
Yes.
So we need a vote on the original motion. Sorry, I should have started out with that.
No, that's fine. Like I said, I, I, in my head, have a very short-end notion of Robert's rules and I need to stay away from that. So thank you guys for having me slow down. So let's, what was that again? We did the roll call vote and so now we have to go back to the.
We need a vote on the motion, which is essentially amended motion.
So let's go back to, can I get a motion to approve the use of CARES Act funds to?
I think the motion's already been made, the amendment's happened, so we just need to vote now on that motion which has.
I have some amendments.
Correct, thank you.
I should have just withdrawn my original.
No, it's fine. This is great. This is why we're doing this.
This is a little bit of practice for us as we're going through, so this is always a good thing. We learn.
It keeps me humble. So let's, say that on the time. It's been a long day. So we need to go back to the.
You'll read the original motion and then amend it?
As amended. I, so the original motion is to approve the use of CARES Act funds to hire an ELL para- for Bearinoff Elementary for one year. As amended, up to $55,000. Is there a, can I get a motion? As amended?
I think we just, it's already been, yeah, so we just needed a roll call vote for it.
Mitch Mark?
Yes.
Tristan Gavon?
Yes.
Blossom Hill Olson?
Yes.
Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Melanie Borg?
Yes.
Motion passed.
When I get to heaven, I'm going to have discussion business. All right. So motion passes as amended. Moving on to item 6E to special education case manager. May I get a motion to approve the CARES Act funds to hire a special education case manager for Bearinoff Elementary for one year?
I move to approve the use of CARES Act funds to hire a special education case manager for Bearinoff Elementary for one year in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Can I get a second?
A second.
The move and seconded. I, let's open up the floor for a discussion. Public comment.
You have a public comment first.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mike Vieira, here as president of the Special Education Association. We just, on that with the association, I wanted to say that we've been happy to work collaboratively with the district and appreciate their sense of urgency on this matter in particular. As you discussed, the needs at the lower levels, I think, coming back from the pandemic are more than we have to spare. And we remain very concerned about the workload of our special education case managers at that level. We're very much in support of this and we hope we continue to evaluate this. And so we'll just slap this up and on it and call it a good because we were highly concerned about the workload on the teachers down there. So we're fully in support of it. We're appreciative of the district's urgency to do this and we're going to continue to work to monitor the situation and make sure that it's a healthy environment for students, staff, and everyone involved. So thanks for considering it and we hope that you approve it.
So I had a little bit to add on this for the board. So I did want to give a little context of why we, well, really, we're putting, we're asking you to, this is in the upcoming couple of months. But every October 1st is the beginning of count for the district. And so we kind of, I keep a running number for the number of special education students in the district. And I want to bring it to the board's attention that in the last three years, we've had anywhere between 158 on FY22 to 166 special education students in the district in FY22 last year. So running around 160, 165 special education students preschool through age 22. This year, October 1st, beginning of the count, we have 197. So we've increased 31 special education students. And that's across the district. That's not isolated in certain buildings. But I will say that there is a significant number of early education needs. And I think that they're directly related to the pandemic. I think that there's, and looking at the needs we're seeing, we have an undersocialized group of preschool and kindergarten students that seems to be directly related to the pandemic. And the, but prior to the beginning of the school year, I already made some changes in the way that caseloads were distributed and supported at the kindergarten, first grade level. We have a partnership with STA and Click It! How to Head Start with Wuching Preschool. In the past, our district has given two special ed case manager positions toward that partnership, which we highly value. I communicated to our partners in the spring that given the level of needs at kindergarten and first grade, we would need to, we could only put one case manager towards that. We need, we needed to put more resources towards kindergarten and first grade. Even with that change, we continue to see significant needs to increase support at a K1 level for special education students. So this is a, this is a very unusual request once the school year started, but it's a very unusual circumstance and one that I've spent a lot of time, I've spent pretty much every day there this week. And I'll continue to do so because there's a need to significantly support our staff at this level. And so this, this request to add this position using CARES Act funding, I think, is very appropriate. The ELL position request is, I think, also related to some equity of serving ELL students. In this, in this case, I think we have students greatly affected by the pandemic and need, we've seen a significant increase in the number of development, development-related needs at this preschool and kindergarten level. So that's, that's a request on the table to, to add this case manager position. And that would distribute the needs a little bit more and allow for our highest needs students to get the real, the care that they need and all students to receive the IEP services that they require. So I'm happy to provide any further, or answer any further questions, but that's in broad strokes, the request. And it is one that we couldn't wait till November 1st to get to because it's, it's very pressing.
Are there any questions with Mr. Barron?
So is it going to take time to recruit and advertise from out of Sitka? Or is there applicant pool here in Sitka?
So it starts out within the district, correct?
Yeah, so we will follow the collective bargaining agreement related to both positions. One's a classified and one is a certified position. So we'll follow the internal process of looking at candidates, but specifically for the special ed teacher position, we will advertise there is a potential for an applicant that's in town, that's a known person. But I want to follow the kind of the process here. Bringing it to the board first, I, you know, have been working with Ms. LaCron to look at what our options are. This has been coming, strongly coming to our attention, particularly from the beginning of the school year, but really in the last two or three weeks, it's really come to a point of really requiring some, a lot of additional support. So we haven't put our feelers out and there is a potential of somebody in the community that's certified. So that's, but we're going to follow that process and, and review and follow our procedures and protocols. Our hope would be that we would find somebody local rather than having to wait. And I'm hopeful for that. So, but yeah, the first step was, because this is an addition to the budget, to bring this to the board.
Just to put in, you know, essentially as soon as, you know, the yell's on, the pass at this, passes, we will try to post both of those positions and get those out before the end of the day. So it's, it's that pressing that we want to get the word out there so people are aware. Over the weekend, we were giving ourselves as much time as possible to find, you know, a big number of both of those positions.
And it said that it is most likely going to be filled in a timely manner or is it?
We will, this, yeah.
So is there a plan B of waiting? And what is, because it is pressing and I am concerned about the mental health of our teachers and what they're going through. What is the district's plan if it does take time to recruit?
So I, so I am personally there. I, that's why I've been there every single day. So I will be there every day until supporting. And we've also, Mr. Hauser and I have also, we just, we're looking at putting every resource that's necessary, including me personally being there on site. And I suspect I'll have to be there quite a bit and that this has been a trend over the last couple of years. I try to get to every building pretty much on a weekly basis. But in the last couple of years, the time I spend at the K1 level and preschool level is significant and it's because mostly behavior, social, emotional needs, socialization and supporting staff and some of these more complex needs, trauma-based issues and just development. We, we have a very unusual situation. We've identified students with very significant medical and language needs that are unusual for a district our size and four students in the last month. So just, there's just a very unusual thing happening right now and some of that is pandemic-related. Some of it's just the way it occurs and just the way it happens. So just trying to make sure that our staff have the resources necessary to not burn out, to feel supported and to accomplish their, their job and do it well. So I do want to say I'm extremely impressed with the skill and the dedication of our staff. But this is something that needs to be attention in order to, to value and retain our current staff because it's very stressful right now and they're doing their very best. And we just need to bring as, as much as we can to bear on supporting our, our teachers.
I would like to add, as a parent of a student with special needs, the dedication that my son has received over the years from paraprofessionals and special ed teachers and their high regard in seeing him success. He wouldn't be in the place where he is today without that dedication. And so with that, it hits home close for me personally. And I know how, on a regular day, when everything is working fine, that area is still high-stress and high-demanding. And with the atmosphere it is today and with the added stress and burnout and the unusual circumstances that you've brought up, I can only see that adding this position will create that healthy environment for our teachers, which will then create a healthy environment for our students and families. So is there any other public comment to that? Is, is there any question, any more question?
I would just, I would just finally add one thing. And I think it's important to note that we're putting this under COVID funding, recommending that. And I think that's appropriate, as I've mentioned. But you notice that if we're adding, if we have 30 extra kids, this is something that as we enter the next year's budget conversation, we should, we will continue to look at and make sure that the board knows what our projections are, how we need to continue to support these positions beyond the COVID funding. And that's going to be a challenge, but it's one that we need to look at, look at very carefully.
That means we're going to have to advocate tariffs by just anymore?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Ms. Mark?
Just one more. On the salary, is that higher than usual because of the urgency? Or is that the normal average salary for that position?
That's, that includes benefits as well in my, in my.
And what we did is we did kind of looked at a master degree at subject for the teacher. And we did kind of found that middle-of-the-road costing for, for the teacher. And again, we did prorate it based on the fact that we are, you know, about a month and a half into the school year. But that is, we try to, when we budget out, we try to find that, that average costing that is in there and kind of look at what the cost might be, so.
I think as a new board member, I think it'd be helpful to Mr. Hauser to let, to, I know that we've already gone through the budget process, but to make available the steps.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So that it will become more familiar how the step, how the steps go.
Absolutely, do that.
So any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tristan, and thank you for your dedication and your commitment, Mr. Hauser. Thank you. And thank you guys for seeing the urgency and. And I think a lot of people may have waited for our next meeting. And so many, a lot of our students and our teachers. With that being said, it's, the motion on the table, Mr. Gavon has moved to approve the use of CARES Act funds to hire a Special Education Case Manager for Bear Notch Elementary for one year in the amount of.
Not exceed 90,000.
Not exceed 90,000 dollars. Is there a second?
We need to go over, but we just.
Actually, I have a comment if you'd like. Yeah, I'll try to be brief because I know, you know, time, time is an issue to jump into our retreat. But I did, just for the public, a little bit of additional information or context. You know, Chris covered a lot of this. I think Mike spoke to it very well as well. I've been fortunate to be involved in the Wuching preschool in the past. And I think for context, you know, just in that one preschool, that's the only publicly available free of charge preschool here in Sitka. Typically, Wuching preschool on an annual basis had 30 to 40 students. You know, so for the last two years, previous to this year, those students, they went from having four days a week for about three and a half hours a day, sometimes more, with additional support through, through the preschool. They went from that to basically a once or twice a week Zoom meeting. So you had a whole cohort of preschool students from, from Wuching preschool who have basically not received the kind of preschool education that they need. And Wuching preschool, back when it was established in 2012, one of the reasons behind that was as an early intervention for special education. So I think it's very clear that there's an increased need that, that students at that level have not received the, the early education that they need to be successful. Another point, and I brought this up in my report last meeting, you know, because we only have that one public preschool and, you know, Mount Ashcombe preschool, many of our daycare centers function effectively as preschools for students. And I mentioned the STA Social Services Department, their, their recent childcare needs assessment that found out of the 400 available slots or regularly available slots for preschool, or I'm sorry, daycare, were down to 200, less than 200, 196. So you also have a huge need there that went unmet and, you know, kids on wait lists for what are effectively our preschool system to prepare them for kindergarten. So again, just appreciate administration, staff for, for working on this. And also just wanted to say a note of appreciation for Chris and all of the work that he's done. You know, I mean, effectively, you know, serving as assistant superintendent while also wearing that special hat and every other responsibility he's had. So I just want to also recognize Chris and a word of appreciation for him.
And time is a colonialistic construct.
There you go.
So don't ever worry about time.
Take the time to do the thing we need to do. Right.
And with your, your very fine points that you've brought up as well, you know, with the, I highly appreciate the work that STA has done on getting the childcare assessment needs out there and to the public and providing that information because it, it shows that we will, in the future, need to move on to strengthening our involvement and care and uplift that, that need within our community to ensure that our district and our children stay successful and our families stay, that our families are taken care of. Everyone is stressed out and everyone is overwhelmed. And it does not help when we need to go to work and there is bills that need to be paid, but you cannot find childcare. So that, again, will probably play into one of the parts of building the new district and determine when it comes into play. All right. Let's do a roll call vote.
Rich Moore?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to state it for a roll call vote?
Yeah, that's fine. Tristan Gavon?
Yes.
Blossom Hill Olson?
Yes.
Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Melanie Borg?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to item number seven amendment. Any good of your work? I'd like to say something. Thank you, Mike. I think you need your own plaque. Your dedication to coming to meetings is always noticed and you're a vital part to our continuing conversation with our teachers and our staff. So thank you.
Thanks for your listening, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Time for dinner or something?
Yes. I adjourn this meeting at 5:16 PM.